Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. And first, we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. So this evening, we have some proclamations. We have the National Merit Scholarship Program. And Dr. William Carlin and Amy Lin, the North Penn High School Assistant Principal, are here to introduce the students that are receiving tonight's recognition for the 68th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. So, Mr. Carlin, Mrs. Lin, welcome.
As Dr. Carlin and Mrs. Lin make their way to the microphone, and while we're so pleased to have these students with us here this evening and their families to recognize this great accomplishment, I do want to note that the musical concert at the high school is taking place this evening. So while the list before you has quite a few students on it, this is a small representation of that group, but we're glad you're here.
So we're going to announce the commended students first. Our first student is Samrin Akther, Jack Bachman, Ashika Bhatt, Lauren Blanch, Benjamin Buckholz, Megan Chester, Amog Desai, Ian Hegi, Abigail Holmberg, Ria Kalola, Hannah Kim, Chu Han Kim, and Nathaniel Kim.
So continuing with our commended students, we have William Malin, Ryan Reddy, Chinme Supri, Stella Shin, Anu Tassif, Lily Wang, Seon Yu, Alex Zhang. That concludes our commended, and now on to our semifinalists.
Okay. Irene Chung, Gigi Dinesh, Ryan Huang, Joshua Kim, and Adidi Kauta.
We have Mary Ann Mathew, Johnny Meng, Annabelle Pearson, Hans Piara, Yash Probu, Nathania Prinsley, Jeanette Su, Isha Beliga, who just received amazing news right before this as she found out she was accepted to University of Penn. We have a couple other students who decided to wait until after this to check their acceptance. Isha decided to go ahead and do that. We have Kathryn Wang, and lastly, but not least, Jacob Yin. Yes, that's it. That concludes our commended and semifinalists.
All right, can we get another round of applause for our... Okay, next will be our Audience of Citizens. We are going to allow for an hour of public comment this evening. We have 11 people that have already pre-registered, so we're going to start with them, and then we will allow anyone else who would like to make a public comment on the items on the agenda this evening after that. So I'm going to read off the statement, and then we'll start. "This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the Audience of Citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which are or may come before the Board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the Board. When appropriate, individual school directors may choose to respond to the public comments that have been made once the Audience of Citizens period has concluded, or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. And this is pursuant to Board Policy 903."
Madam President, if I may, just to clarify sort of further the statement that was made regarding Audience of Citizens, just as a reminder, comments that are made during Audience of the Citizens portion of tonight's meeting are... Those comments are of the speakers themselves. Any statements that are made do not necessarily reflect the opinions or viewpoint of the Board of School Directors or the school district in general. The district is required by law to make this comment period available, and we will do so and allow a full variety of opinions to be made during that period of time. Certainly, to the extent that any comments may be viewed as offensive or problematic, the district is legally required to allow those comments to be made. However, individuals should be advised that any statements that are made that are false may open those individuals up to potential liability for def... defamatory statements by anyone who may be harmed by those statements. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, so with that, we will start with the list of pre-registered speakers, and the first one up would be Mrs. Tracy Dilts.
Thank you. Oh, that's a hot mic. Okay. Sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay.
My name is Tracy Marcy, and I live in North Wales. I'm here today to support a very dear friend, Eric Torres. Eric was recently hired by the North Penn School District to work in the tech department, and unfortunately, my friend's reputation is being slandered, and his career is being threatened by a woman in a group of women who is spreading hate and fear through misinformation and outright lies, in my opinion. This woman stated that she feared Eric being around our children, that he was a groomer who read pornographic books at the Lansdale Library drag queen storytime. I attended these events with both my children, and none of the books read of any of these events qualifies as pornography. The woman making these slanderous claims is also an employee of MP's School District and a part of a group called Moms of Liberty. Do you ladies know what liberty is? I believe we all just said it earlier: liberty and justice for all, not just who you choose deserves it and who doesn't. And I must say that the idea exposing my children to that kind of hate puts a lot of fear in me, but I don't stand here and ask that you be fired because your beliefs are different than mine. In addition to his full-time job at MP, Eric works as an entertainer and a drag queen known as Annie Christ. He does not dress in drag at school, nor does he speak about his personal beliefs at school. Entertainers are people who usually work regular jobs to pay the bills while we do what we love at night. We are musicians, comedians, painters, drag queens, artists. We bring color and smiles to this town. Some of you may know me as The Bush, the lead singer of a local band called Three Beards in a Bush, and I'm known for my foul mouth. Does that mean I don't qualify to work as a senior accountant at a cutting-edge biology company? Does that mean North Penn should not have asked me to speak on Career Day because some people consider my lyrics pornographic or inappropriate? No, I am proud of the music I make. I know what entertainment is appropriate for children, and so does Eric. Why... Which is why all of his child-centered events have been 100% family-friendly. Did the Moms of Liberty group, did any of you research your claims or fact-check your accusations by reaching out to those who have attended his events? Perhaps you should read the article written by Lansdale Mayor Gary Herbert, who was at the events and who calls you out for your lies. I have copies for anybody who would like one. Eric is more than just an entertainer, he is a pillar of our community, a friend to all, a role model for children and adults alike. He has dedicated time and money to supporting those in need, a man who made my children feel comfortable with who they are just as they are. This is a man who reads books to children to help them understand acceptance. One of my favorite quotes by the brilliant Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. comes to mind: "People fail to get along because they fear each other, and they fear each other because they don't know each other. They don't know each other because they have not communicated with each other." So I call out all the Moms of Liberty. I ask you to follow the words of this amazing man, Dr. King, and reach out to any of us. Meet with us. Learn who we are, because as you can see, if you look around this room, we are all beautiful creatures. We are the face of your town, your neighbors. We are your community. We are mothers, fathers, brothers, and sisters. We are every color of the rainbow. We are gay, we are straight, we pay taxes, volunteer our time, and we love and bleed just like you.
Mrs. Dilts. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Okay. I just ask that everybody stands up and let us be heard. We love you, Eric, and North Penn loves you, and love always wins.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mrs. Kyla Dilts.
Hi. Yes, you'll see the clock up there. Can you see it from there? No, I can see... All right, yes, you can go. Go ahead. Hi, I'm Kayla Dilts, a freshman at Pembroke Middle School where Eric also works at. I'm here to state that Eric dresses professionally for our school setting, and he acts professionally as well. He's a helpful aspect to the Pembroke IMC. When I first met Eric, he was in drag as Miss Annie at a library reading to little kids just like my friends and me. When I entered the room, I was so excited as Annie stepped in with a wonderful smile on his face and wrote a book I've even read in schools before, known as Naked Mole Rat Gets Dressed. The book states itself, "Wilbur is different from the other naked mole rats in his colony because he wears clothes and he likes it." But what will happen when Grandpa, the oldest, wisest, and most naked naked mole rat ever discovers Wilbur's secret? Funny man and three-time Cal de Cat honoree Mo Williams exposes the naked truth about being yourself and wearing it well. This is a story that encourages individuality. Some Moms of Liberty stepped up claiming this book was pornographic, but in reality, this book and both Eric and Annie gave me the experience to learn that everyone is unique and different, and that's a good thing. I've met Eric when he wasn't in drag, and even then, he was someone I could look up to. Another claim Moms of Liberty made was that some community members are uncomfortable with children around Eric. Well, I'm going to say that's flat-out false. As a victim of grooming, I've come to be more aware of signs between groomers, pedophiles, and in general creeps, and Eric is none of them. He is kind and helpful to students and staff. That is what staff should be like when working in a school. To end my speech, I would just like to say, it's really mean and downer and humane to discriminate someone in their life choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Next up is Eric Torres.
How am I supposed to follow that? Man, I'm Eric Torres, I live in Lansdale, Pennsylvania. Man, all my talking points gone in one minute. I love it. So I'm just going to tell you about the first drag queen storytime that I did at the library. It was 2019. I had three RSVPs on Facebook, and I was like, well, no one wants any of this, but as being someone who got bullied most of my life, I wanted to do an anti-bullying campaign for kids who look different, feel different, think differently, just anyone who really needs to have a healthy relationship with themselves and their parents when it comes to bullying. So, like a week before, a group got ahold of it, and they said, "Everyone, look at this. Can you believe what's going on? Can you believe it?" And everyone was like, "No, we can't believe it." And they were like, "Yeah, look at it." And they were like, "Yeah, this is amazing. We should go to this." And they said, "No, no, stop. Stop looking at it. Don't look at it anymore. We're done." So my RSVPs went from three to 2,897, but who's counting all of those? The point I'm making is... Actually, let me get to that point a little bit. I still have a minute forty-five. I was doing my job here at North Penn about a month ago. Someone texted me and said, "Hey, did you see the school board meeting?" I watched it. Another group is grabbing me and putting me in the spotlight, and I don't think what people realize is that when I'm put in the spotlight, all of the community work I do, everything I stand for, everyone I help gets amped up by 100, and Lansdale shows up every single time. Look at everyone behind me. We had to move to a larger venue. I don't know if it's because of me, but I'm going to say it's because of me. We had to move to a larger venue, and when this group thinks that they're putting a spotlight or an interrogation light on me, it's not an interrogation light, it's a bat signal. It's a signal for every weirdo, everyone who feels like an outcast, everyone who needs help to go to that person, to go to that place, to go to that church, that food bank, that supply drive, and to help our community. With that being said, if anyone in the audience or on the school board would like to talk to me about any community events or local government, I implore you to come say hi. Or if you just want to say hi, say hi. Thank you for having me, have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Brandon Daly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and your time and attention tonight. My name is Brendan Daly, and I have a few brief comments to make before you this evening. Twelve score and six years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. As the great emancipator penned these words, I paraphrased, not far from here, he enumerated two founding principles of our great country: equality and liberty. All people are created equal, and all people are free to become whoever they want and reach as far for their dreams as their efforts will allow. When I sat down to think about what I was going to say tonight, I first thought I would be dismissive of those in attendance who have issues with Eric Torres's employment here in the North Penn School District. I was going to say that this debate is just a constructed culture war battle whipped up by politicians looking to distract and divide us. That is, until I realized that this is about more than one man's job. This is about a debate about whether we, as a community, really believe in those two founding principles of our country. "All men are created equal," Jefferson wrote, and Lincoln reaffirmed that day. Whatever the color of your skin, whoever you choose to worship, who you love, or who you dress, all men and women are created equal. As such, let people only be judged by the quality of their actions and the content of their character. Anyone willing to take their time out of their busy schedule to read to children, to spread literacy, to foster our children's education is showing us through their actions their character, and that character is impeccable. It doesn't matter if that person is wearing a suit, a dress, a dinosaur outfit, or a railroad conductor's uniform. They're choosing to teach our children to better their lives and to open their minds, to show them that they can become whoever they want and to reach as far for their dreams as their efforts will allow. For some here, they would have Eric fired. Some here would have the library defunded. Some here have come for the jobs for those who would even consider hiring Eric in the first place. I know Eric. I know him to be kind, I know him to be gracious and caring. I've chosen to live in this area and raise my family in this community because of the people within it, and Eric is a big part of that community. I also know him to be intelligent, dedicated, and extremely competent. Eric could easily be making twice as much money as he does now, probably working a lot less hard. Instead, he works here, behind the scenes, every day, ensuring that your kids, our kids, have access to the technology that they will absolutely have to master to be competitive in this world. He chooses to do that because he understands the importance of that knowledge and those skills to our children and our community. Who he is, who he loves, and how he dresses doesn't change that one bit, but for some of you here in attendance, it does. I might not be able to change your mind about how people you've never met should dress when you're not around.
Mr. Daly, I'm sorry. Can you wrap it up? Your three minutes is up.
Sure, of course. Could you just state your municipality that you reside in?
Lansdale.
Thank you.
I did not mean to remind you that what our fathers, our founding fathers told us in the early 1930s, but consider the real victims of your intolerance of prejudice isn't Eric. You'll be fine. It's your children. I'm speaking here tonight to make sure that it isn't my child.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Next is Mrs. Rachel Butler.
I live in Lansdale.
For those of you who don't speak American Sign Language, I just said my name is Rachel Butler, I live in Lansdale. Now, I introduce myself in American Sign Language because I know Mr. Fusco is fluent, and I know that I have at least one connection in this group of board members here. There are people who are searching for connections for another human being every single day. In the deaf community, that's one way of doing it, is through sign language. It happened to be my major, it happened to be Mr. Fusco's profession at one point, but I, you know, I use that to make connections with people who are deaf, people who know sign language. Eric Torres is a person who makes connections with the outcasts, the people who feel that they're downtrodden. I personally was bullied my entire school life, and, you know, Eric and I have that in common, that we were bullied when we were kids. I am now a tenured teacher of thirteen years, and I have been working in different school districts throughout the Philadelphia region, and I've seen what it looks like to be bullied by students and to be bullied by adults. And student bullying is something that can be cured, adult bullying is something that needs to be addressed, which is why I'm here today, because I'm not here to say I'm the only one, I'm one of many. Even though sometimes you might feel like you're the only one, you're one of many. So my point of being here is just to show support for Eric, to show support for what he's done for this community, and to make sure that everybody feels included, no matter who they are, especially children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. Next up is Rebecca Hoffman.
Good evening. I would like to say...
Real quickly, could you just state your municipality?
Tomason.
Thank you.
I could tell you, I first met Eric in drag as Annie after a trivia night several years ago. Eric didn't know the extent to which our family was suffering and the extent to which my partner was suffering, but the few words of encouragement and acceptance and affirmation from Eric I conveyed to my partner were transformative. I believe these brief words of acceptance from a stranger played a role in bringing me a couple extra years with my partner. I could tell you, we chatted about children's books as we both share an affinity for them and their ability to serve as a beautiful gift of affirmation for a child. For some precious lambs among us, it's the only affirmation they're receiving. The science is clear: this saves lives. I could tell you that at a time when school personnel are leaving in droves, it's a gift finding a qualified individual at all, let alone one with these sparkling qualities who wants to work for you and risk the wrath of that every day. But somehow Eric does. Instead of taking that much-needed time to recover and self-care, Eric manages to wrap a giant magic pinata around all of that hate, hands it off to Annie, who somehow turns it into a confetti of sweetness and joy and love, and she sprinkles that all over Lansdale. Annie is the pure antidote to hate. I could tell you that I imagine their superpower is not without great personal consequence. I imagine it is a heavy burden to bear, and yet perseverance. I could tell you Annie's very existence and willingness to grace our community with outreach is a gift that should be cherished and valued. You are cherished and valued. The joy Annie brought to my children by just being, by just existing on Halloween made them feel safe and welcome at a time when they desperately needed to feel just that. My children lost their father in May, their trans father, to police violence. Every day, this community is under attack, and Eric responds with love. Every single time, even here, love and humor. I could tell you that children's stories and those who bring them alive, who bring hope and possibility, who show kids these exist, I could tell you you are lucky if these unique individuals grace you with their light. I could, I could tell you all those things and more, but the bottom line is, I don't have to, because Eric, like you and I and everyone else, is entitled to earn a living.
Mrs. Hoffman, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next up is Dave Heck.
Good evening. Time of myself here. My name's Dave Heck. I'm a lifelong resident of the North Penn area, and I live in the historic west ward of Lansdale. I grew up here my whole life, and I, unlike a lot of people who grew up here, don't hate it here. I've always thought it was a great place to live, and I've always thought the North Penn School District was a great place to go to school. I don't relate to anybody that has the cheering things to say to you people that I saw on the video from last month. I don't think there's a lot of base for what the people say to you guys, so kind of just like, sorry that you guys had to deal with that, and thanks for putting up with it, because I know it's for the greater good. I've gotten to do a lot with my life with the music scene, and that in no short way brought me to knowing Eric as an entertainer in our town, and it kind of changed my life. I'm a, you know, just like everybody, you deal with your own thing, and he brought something to my life that I didn't have before, and that was calmness, it was tranquility. to my life that I didn't have before, and that was calmness, it was tranquility. It was learning to be without having to change other people. It is through him that I really learned how to be a real person. I had to not just shove everything away, have me beat anything that I didn't agree with. The people that said these things about Eric don't know what they're talking about, for one. And two, they don't really know what they're doing, even though they're doing it. They're terrorizing a community with misinformation. If you look up the definition, that's what they are doing. I hesitate to say that because I know it's a harsh word that people don't like hearing these days, but that's what they're doing, and they're harming children because of it. They think they're saving them, they're harming them. It's not my place to say what's right and what's wrong, just like it's not theirs. I was raised religiously in this community. I grew up going to Northwell Baptist and the Bethany Bible Fellowship. I no longer evolve with the church. My parents are. My parents are both educators, and they looked at that tape from last month and they almost had to just laugh through it. It's like, what are these people even trying to say? And I know that there's no thing that you can like, you know, screen these people or, you know, check with things. No, they have the right to say it, just like everybody has the right to say what they want without judgment, without negative affirmations. I just think it's important that everybody understands that Eric is a very, very, very loved person, and it's for a reason. I was lucky enough to be the executive producer of the documentary about the do-it-yourself community of Lansdale Entertainment. And that's because people actually come here because we are so good at what we do here. We don't put up with bullying, we don't put up with people telling us what we can't do. And he had something to say in that when he was interviewed, where he's like, you know, you have to be the person that you needed as a child, as an adult. You had to be the adult you needed. And he's a perfect representation of that mentality, and I really love that guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heck.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam President.
Sure.
Thank you all for listening for a moment. Until recently, I lived at 900 Allentown Road here in Lansdale, and now live in Abington,
This comment period is only for residents and taxpayers of the school district.
I am an educator until recently.
I understand. The district has consistently applied this policy, and in order to continue to do so, we do have to apply it across the board. So we can't let individuals who are not residents, taxpayers, employees of the school district, or students to speak. Thanks for coming this evening, though.
Could you maybe send us an email? Could you maybe send us an email instead? No. You're not a resident, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, you are not permitted to speak at this time.
Only taxpayers and residents.
Ma'am, you are invited to provide any written feedback to the board. You can certainly email the board, and they would be happy to consider your statements.
Mrs. Redd, could you please have a seat? Mrs. Redd, please.
Ma'am, you are now disrupting this meeting, and you may be asked to remove this meeting. We're happy to have you remain for the remainder of it, but if you continue to stay at the podium, you will be asked to be removed from the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Redd. Mrs. Redd, please, thank you.
Good evening. There seems to be some confusion on social media about my speech regarding the 1117 action meeting.
Mrs. Gad, can you state your comments or your municipality, please?
Lansdale. We are here as concerned parents, not for any particular group. It was completely taken out of context, so I am here to clear that up. We are providing awareness and asking questions regarding North Penn's hiring process. It's absurd to me that this board refuses to answer questions when all we are doing is seeking truth. If the board would respond to their constituents, we wouldn't be here defending our free speech. This is about suppressing and attacking free speech when people disagree with the narrative. Freedom of speech is a principle that supports the freedom of an individual or a community to articulate their opinions and ideas without fear of retaliation, censorship, or legal sanction. There is no hate here. Interesting how the one-sided narrative on North Penn Now come out about how concerned parents are haters. On one hand mentions the parents are haters, but yet mentions that parents have the right to do what they want with their kids. Exactly. If parents want their kids exposed to listening to inappropriate books by Drag Queen in a public forum, fine, but the same respect, the same...
Excuse me, hold on.
...should be given.
Please, no yelling out from the audience. We have to have each speaker have their time, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gad.
The same respect should be given, please, to parents and taxpayers that have the right to know what the standards are for any new hires in our school district. There are many in the community...
Please stop calling out from the audience and allow the speaker to have her time uninterrupted. Thank you.
There are many in the community that are concerned about where the education system is heading, need to get back to basics. There is a silent majority that just doesn't agree with this narrative but afraid to voice their opinions, ideas, or post questions in the event of possibly being ostracized in the community. Ask yourself, why are not any concerns from the community being addressed? There is no hate, only concern for our kids. The lack of transparency, though, from this board is sad. Dr. Bauer met with two members from this community to discuss this new hire. He was visually shocked about Mr. Torres's employment back in November. He said he would look into it and follow up, but nothing. Also, no board member or Dr. Bauer responded to any comment regarding Mr. Torres. It was asked about Annie Christ again in a committee meeting the following week, and no follow-up was given. No surprise that no other concerns have been answered by this board. If a well-known person in the community is posting on social media, that info is out there for the public to see. People have to take responsibility for their words and actions. With inclusion being the hot topic, why aren't patriotic or Christian ideologies embedded in the district?
Mrs. Gad?
No, it isn't.
Yes, Mrs. Gad, your time's up. Please do not yell out from the audience, please. Mrs. Gad, your time is up. Please take a seat. Yes, it is. Mr. Scrocky, can you set the clock for thirty seconds?
Yeah.
Thirty seconds. Please do not yell out from the audience.
With inclusion being the hot topic, why aren't patriotic or Christian ideologies embedded in the district? I ask who is responsible and accountable for anyone that is hired that may not be the best choice for our kids. Where is the protection of the most innocent and vulnerable in our community? It's our job as parents to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, next up would be Mrs. Susan Lyons-Joel.
By the way, I am married, but I prefer Ms.
Ms.
Thank you. My name is Susan Lyons-Joel, and I've been a resident of Lansdale Borough and now Hattville Township for sixteen years, right outside, right next to the hospital. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for myself and my family tonight. I am honestly surprised at the reason I'm here. As a parent of a student in this school district and as an educator outside the district, I understand how important the staff and faculty of our schools are to making a positive, forward-thinking environment where all students feel safe and welcome for who they are and who they plan to be. A staff member such as Mr. Torres, who is involved in theatrical artistic expression outside the school, is exactly the type of well-rounded person I want in my child's school. Education is more than a building, more than grammar rules on the page or reactions in a lab. At their best, our public schools serve all students and prepare them for the real world. Therefore, education is also about promoting diversity, equality, understanding, compassion, and acceptance. I believe in the rights of freedom of speech, but also freedom of association. I also know how vulnerable those rights can be when a vocal minority tries to deny those rights to others. And in the case of false speech, there are consequences. On a personal note, I ask the school board to model the diversity and fairness we seek to instill in the students we serve and the children we parent. I and my husband are part of a multiracial, multi-ethnic family, and both I and my child are queer. My child, a successful student at North Penn High School, is also non-binary. They wanted to be here, but they're at the winter concert. And I stand here representing them as well. They have always gotten the support and acceptance they needed from the faculty and staff at Inglewood, Pendale, and down North Penn. They have felt safe in their schools, and in today's world, that's high praise. Part of that safety is knowing that their schools are committed to working with people from all backgrounds and finding real-world solutions to real-world issues. I ask the school board to stand with their own employee and judge him by his work performance, just like they would any other employee in the district. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Mr. Lanier.
Jason DeRlandzio. I was one of the community members who asked Dr. Bauer about hiring of Annie Christ. Wanted to know for what reason. And it occurred to me, after reading some things from the NEA, that I didn't know if this was just a ploy to satisfy the NEA's wish to hire transgender people. And I'd say that mainly because there's, what, three or four NEA members up here, and Cassa got five for fifty thousand dollars when you tried to run for political office, and Tina's been able to spend all that money. So they're embedded by the... No? No, you didn't? Where'd the money go? Where'd the money go? So if you're able to send money to campaigns, I don't know, maybe Mayor Gary's campaign, whomever you want, remember it was your political, whatever political ideation you want to send to, that's fine, I suppose. But, that being said, looking at what the NEA wants to do is promote transgender teachers and employees in schools. I'm not sure I understand why. Why, why, why is that beneficial? I want to know that not very long ago, there is less than a very small minority of transgender people, assuming that the biology hasn't changed.
Please stop yelling out from the audience.
Ladies and gentlemen, when you call out, we then have to yield time back. So keep that in mind.
Please do not yell out from the audience. Mr. Lanier.
Right, so, um, my point being, why suddenly is it representing twenty percent of youth? Is it because it's become sort of a movement amongst youths, not necessarily that they truly believe it, but it happens to be something that is being pushed by social media, which is being pushed by educators? And I want to know why. And much to the chagrin, and much to the chagrin of these, the people behind me here, in reality, the transgender statistics are frightening. Meaning, kids that...
Mrs. Redd. Mrs. Redd, please stop. Dr. Redd, please stop.
Kids that which are affirmed have a higher suicide ideation. It's not, it's not smaller, it doesn't, affirming care does not provide kids are being better off. It does not help them. It hurts them. This is from statistics that were accumulated in Sweden. They did this long ago, I've mentioned it before. So if anybody here, if anybody who wants to read the statistics, they can do it.
Mr. Lanier, please address the board. Don't address the audience.
In any event, in any event, so my question is, how do, how do the parents who aren't on board with this, and you can, I don't know, give me a little more time, how are the people who are not on board with this able to assure that, is Eric wearing, coming to the school as Annie Christ? And how do we know that? And if he doesn't, why not?
Mr. Lanier, you've already been told that it isn't. Your time is up. You've got thirty seconds. It's up.
Right. So what we're trying, what we're made to believe...
Mr. Lanier, you're done. Your time is up. Have a seat. You have thirty seconds.
Who's this at, B, back there?
Hold on.
Hey, he's here.
All right, that is our list of speakers that were pre-registered. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment on an agenda item at this time? On an agenda item. Come on up, if you want to make a comment on something that is on tonight's agenda.
You might cut me off because I don't, hi, I'm Molly. I don't live here, I do however work for...
No. Sorry, Molly, you have to be, no. You have to be a taxpayer or a resident. Sorry. No. Sorry. You have to be a taxpayer or a resident to speak at this...
Of the school district, and the intermediate unit is not the school district.
Thank you, Molly. Is your comment on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Kylie Wick, and I live in Lansdale. I think it's kind of ridiculous, the fact that people are coming after someone who genuinely cares about our youth and cares about people and students like me and children like me, people who have either been groomed or assaulted or been abused in some sort of way, somebody who is fighting to make a change, whether it's with drug and alcohol or with abuse, somebody who's actually fighting to make a change and help with suicide, because it's really common. It's something that happens with so many people, and taking away people's right to be able to be who they are is going to make that worse. If you weren't able to be yourself, how would you feel? If you weren't able to do the things that you enjoy, if you weren't able to live your life as who you're supposed to be, how would you feel? You wouldn't feel like you're human. It's not okay to treat people like they're not human just because you have different beliefs. And it's not fair to come after people who are trying to stand up for the underdog, especially not when I myself am part of the LGBT community. And I've been harassed about it, and I've been ridiculed for it, and that's not fair. Just because somebody else doesn't believe in it, and just because somebody else isn't a part of it and doesn't like it, doesn't mean you have to comment on it, doesn't mean you have to harass people about it, doesn't mean you get a say on it, because it has nothing to do with you. Especially when it's causing so many problems for different people, and it pisses me off. It pisses me off that someone who genuinely cares about students, someone who genuinely cares about the town is being attacked. And it's not fair. It's not. Somebody who's making a safe place for students, somebody who's making them feel comfortable, and he's professional. He is professional. Any professional person wouldn't come in dressed up as drag, like, unless it were an event, because that's something that he does outside of school, that is something that he does as entertainment outside of school. You can separate your hobbies from work, and if you can't do that, it's ridiculous that bigoted people think that it's okay to attack people for having different beliefs. And I think people need to sometimes learn to just do their things to themselves, because some people do not care.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time?
Pauline Braccio, Lansdale. Listening to all of this, I'm thinking, wow, it's really done. We're really lost now. You know, what they're saying about this Eric, aka Annie Christ, that's what rumors do. That's what cult leaders do. They find people who are, and you see, Tina, you have no control over this group.
Mrs. Braccio?
None. Do not try to scold me, okay? You have no control over these people. Get them out of here if they can't, you...
Mrs. Braccio, hold on a minute. To the members of the audience, please do not yell out from the audience. Let Mrs. Braccio have her time. Mrs. Braccio, I do have control, okay? So you can go speak now.
As I was saying, that's how cult leaders, that's how people draw in victims. That's how they get their victims, because they act so nice to them, and they offer safe space for them until it's not safe anymore. This is, this really astonishes me. I had no expectation of this when I came to the meeting tonight. I had no expectation of this when I came to the meeting tonight. I've been doing a lot of reading about, I don't know if this Eric is transgender, he's certainly not a woman, so, well, it kind of is if he's portraying himself as a woman.
Audience members, please.
And what I'm trying to say is, whatever he is, okay, whether he portrays himself as a woman, and he's really a man, or vice versa, or he wants to be a woman, whatever he is, he is not, he really is not being genuine. Because if you have to dress up as something you're not, then how are you you?
Mrs. Hoffman, please don't yell out. Go ahead, Mrs. Braccio.
And I was very disappointed in, you know, you are really coming down on people who don't live here, and yet that first woman, she would not move. And I, you know, you have security here for a reason, and I think you need to use that.
You're right. That's very ironic coming from you, Mrs. Braccio, bringing Mr. Crainey here.
I'm sorry, what?
Bringing Mr. Crainey here.
Oh, no. You can make up anything you want, Tina.
Oh, there you are, Mr. Crainey. Gotcha. Mr. Monticelli, aka Mr. Crainey.
My time is still running. Hello? Anyway, so I keep, I keep reading about so many people who have gone, there was a Marine, he had PTSD, or whatever it is, and PTSD, thank you. And he was convinced by the therapist that he was a woman. He went through the transgender thing. 10 years later, he regrets it, and now he is detransitioning. This happens over and over and over.
Okay. Mrs. Braccio, your time is up. Thank you. Mrs. Braccio. All right, we will allow, we have six more minutes, and then we will hit the one-hour mark for public comments. So we have two more public comments. Mr. Altieri, you can be number one. And then one more after that.
So I came to the board meeting, but again, zero intention of speaking. I've already made that clear to the board. I believe the board is, their minds are made up. There's no open mind, there's no ability to have a conversation with the board. I would like to thank Todd Bauer, A, for meeting with me, and B, for not sending out a message last night or this morning in regards to virtual learning, the possibility of snow. It's really good that our kids were able to go to school today, and I want to say thank you. I'm hoping that's a change. I also came because, I'm not going to lie, I saw some messages that there were going to be people tonight speaking. I'm not smart enough or wise enough to speak towards that. I speak for my child. I want my child to be taught the curriculum. But in those text messages, which I read, and I listened tonight, one thing that stood out to me was several times I heard, "Let's educate the poor misguided people. Let's open their minds and hearts through the beautiful power of words." Well, that didn't happen from my perspective this evening. Again, I listened. I was told by a gentleman sitting behind me, "He shut the fuck up when I asked him to allow somebody else to speak. That's not appropriate." So my mind and my heart is not open. Good night.
Good evening, Mayor Herbert.
Good evening, Council. Counselor, excuse me, board directors. Mayor Gary Herbert, Lansdale Borough. It's a little different for me to be on this side of the table. First, let me thank you for all of the hard work that you do up there. My father used to be a school board president in the school district that I grew up in. It was hard. It was one of the hardest things he ever did. So I know how hard you're working, and I know how hard your job is. So thank you so much for the work that you do. Tonight, I, you know, I'm sure you all have read my article in the defense of Eric and the idea of otherism being a plague upon our community and our country. But I wanted to share some more words of concern from the statements that I've seen tonight and the statements that I've seen in the previous meeting. If you go not so far back in the history of education, you quickly learn that those questions that are being asked, those ideas of what's happening in our classrooms, were the same questions being raised of gay and lesbian teachers in the 60s and 70s. They were being raised because they wanted them to be fired. It was that simple. And many great educators lost their jobs. Many people who belonged in the classroom teaching kids, who had great perspectives on life, who understood the nuances and challenges of today, they didn't get the chance to share that knowledge with the students that needed it. So I thank you for your time, I thank you for all the hard work, and I hope that you can see the language that was used tonight, and the language that was used in the last meeting for what it was, which is just another reiteration of trying to get people who they see as different, people they don't understand or they don't appreciate, out of education for reasons that only they can understand. So please, take this all, I apologize if I raised a ruckus in your meeting, and I again appreciate so much of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Herbert. Okay, that'll end tonight's public comment, period. Is there anyone on the audience or administration that would like to make a comment at this time? Before we move on?
Yeah, I would. I think it's appropriate, given the community response to this meeting, even beyond this meeting, that we as directors speak on this. I don't want to call it an issue, because there's no issue, right? Eric was hired, Eric does a job. I've never met Eric personally. I was not part of the hiring process. I knew who Annie Price was, and when this became an issue that others in the community decided to make an issue, that was when I became aware that he even was an employee in the district. But to keep this, and Eric, you are the reason why we moved this meeting, in case you're wondering, to answer that question. I'm just going to make this simple. Eric has a right to work in North Penn. Eric has a right to live his life. Eric has a right to give back to his community the way that he does. We have talked at length...
Mrs. Gad.
No, that's all right. But we have talked at length about our hiring process in other meetings. It's not on tonight's particular agenda, because we do have business items to attend to, but I can assure you, through ECI meetings, through a number of work session meetings, looking at our plan for the district, we've outlined it, we've detailed it, we've talked about hiring panels, we've talked about training for staff to come in and with an unbiased eye, look to make judgments about who would best fit a skill set that we need. Right? And Eric did. And that's where that conversation ended, and that's where that conversation should have ended. So I want to make sure that the community hears this, and not just the adults in the room tonight, but the students at North Penn, and in particular, the LGBTQIA+ students at North Penn. And understand, as we've said this before, we have your back, we recognize what this is, and we do not accept it. Eric has a right to work here, and I'm happy he's a part of the team. Welcome to North Penn, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Is there anyone else that has comments tonight?
I just want to say how important public comment and the period of having these discussions. But public comment is directing comments to the board, and in our district, we talk about the need to have courageous conversations. And having a courageous conversations means we engage and we begin to find commonality and common ground. So there's been a lot of divisiveness in the room tonight, and I want us to make sure that when we leave the room this evening, our students need us to come together, our students need us to find common ground, and then our students need to feel supported. So public comment is one way of communicating with the board. If there are those of you that were still wanting to engage, there's email, there's other ways of having those conversations, but let's please find ways of making sure that we are setting and modeling the types of behavior that we are trying to encourage in our students. And that is to have courageous conversations, to find common ground, and to find acceptance. So thank you all for coming out and making public comment tonight. And I want to make sure that we also point out that public comment is inclusive of those who are living in the district, and that includes our students. So I just want to thank our students for also coming out and having a voice this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Dr. G.
Thank you. I think as I was reflecting and listening to what everyone said, I was thinking about what it means to belong, and what it means to have a sense of belonging. And I think anyone that can bring that, pull that out of students is certainly very gifted. And so I want to thank Kate. I think Kate, is that your name? You're a student here? Yes. Was it Kate?
Kayla.
Kayla. Oh, Kayla, you were talking a little about Kayla. So I want to thank you for coming too, because I think it takes a lot of courage to come and speak in front of the board and in front of a group of people, and to have beliefs that are sometimes different from others. But we need students and leaders like you in our community to become citizens. You already are a citizen. So thank you for coming out, because we want to hear from our students, we appreciate hearing from our students. And thank you, Eric, for your service in the district. We appreciate you, and as we appreciate all of our employees in the district. So again, thank you for coming this evening.
Mrs. Wesley.
Hi. So I'd like to also comment about the confidence and support we have of our administration, and a really smart man, Dr. Bauer, told me once, "We do this for the students." And so through our hiring process, I have total confidence, as I'm sure the rest of the board does, that Mr. Torres was the strongest candidate for the position. And he was hired based upon his experience, his education, and that's what he will be judged on and measured in our district. So thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Is there anyone else? Okay, then. We'll move on to the next items on our agenda then. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Casa, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I forgot to take a number. I do want to thank the community for everyone, as my colleague, Ms. Ramich, mentioned, for coming out, because this is an opportunity for us to engage on topics that matter to the community, and to signal what our values are. Because over the last year, two, three years, we've heard a lot about the Constitution, founding fathers, who's a patriot, who isn't. This country and this community, like any other, has been through a lot. It was John Adams who originally talked about the tyranny of the majority. And it's important for us to recognize, for our students and our community in particular, and this goes to Mayor Herbert's point, about pointing out the other when we should be embracing, realizing our better behaviors, and what it does mean to build bridges, to be considerate and civil, and make sure that we afford some grace to people who do have other opinions, other lifestyles, whatever it may be. It's this North Penn community in the school district who I'm very proud of. Every type of political stripe and person voted for me to be your representative, not one party. As much as some people may think there's some memo that's been sent out about how board members are supposed to react, and despite conspiracies and scandals, I'm proud instead of the community that showed up tonight to put in sharp contrast those who want to divide, spread hate and disinformation. This community is bigger than that. And the beauty of...
Excuse me. Please don't engage.
Demonstrating the point, let's make sure that we lead with our hearts and kindness, and for those who choose not to, they will not be in the majority. And silent or not, they will not terrorize, threaten, or make feel unwelcome those who we do see, we love, and support in our schools and our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Okay. All right, I think we'll move on now to the rest of the items on our agenda. So first up would be the approval of the minutes from November 17, 2022 action meeting, and the approval of the minutes from the December 5, 2022 reorganization meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up will be the committee reports. First up will be personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met on December 6, 2022, to discuss matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff and staffing considerations. End of report. Finance. Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did not meet in December. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 10, 2023. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Next is Safe Schools. Mr. Casa, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Coordinator Brandon Roan provided a report to the committee on the pilot rollout of Here Comes the Bus at Oak Park. Mr. Roan reported that students were able to scan onto the bus, and staff from Oak Park assisted on each bus. This will be in preparation for a rollout to the rest of the community of the Here Comes the Bus program in the new year. More information will follow. Mr. Nicholson then provided an update on student discipline for the first marking period. That concluded the meeting. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 30, 2023, at 5:45 PM, and will be held in a virtual format.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Next up is the Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report. Dr. G, please.
The ECI Committee did not hold a meeting in December. Its next meeting will take place on January 4, 2023, at 5:30 PM in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Dr. G. Next up is the Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on November 11, 2022. Its ongoing review of policies for the district have progressed to the 700 series. This series contains various types of property in the district's possession and topics related to that property. At the meeting, four policies were reviewed and discussed. These policies are 701 facilities planning, 706 property records, 707 use of school facilities, 710 use of school facilities by staff. All these policies are on this evening's agenda for the first reading. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 30, at 5 PM, and will be held in a virtual format. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Next up is Facilities and Operations. Mr. Casa, please. Or, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wesley, please.
Thank you. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on Monday, November 28, in a virtual format. The committee reviewed the following items to be moved to this evening's action meeting for the board's consideration. There are two change orders for the NAP Elementary School project, one change order for the Gwinnor Roofing Project, which will extend the completion date, a design proposal for the replacement of door hardware at Gwinnor Elementary School, permission to advertise and seek pricing for the replacement of the North Penn High School's senior cafeteria rooftop HVAC unit, permission to advertise a request for proposal for construction management and pre-construction management services to support the North Penn High School master plan, and finally, a permission to advertise a request for proposal for real estate brokerage services to locate potential sites for the North Penn Transportation Department. The committee also discussed two change orders for the elementary chiller and exhaust fan projects, which will extend the completion date, but this will need to be brought back to the Facilities and Operations meeting in January for further discussion. The committee was presented and discussed informational items, which included the NAP Elementary School project update, update on the healthcare center, and the update on the tenure capital project plan. The next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 30th, at 7:00 PM, and will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Next up is the North Monco Technical Career Center. Mr. Rush? Or, um, Mr. McBane? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee met on Monday, November 21st, and took further action to reevaluate and adjust the curriculum offerings of the center to meet student and community workforce needs. The committee approved next steps, including a plan to sunset the drafting and design program and solicit bids for the renovation of the drafting learning space to prepare for the new building property maintenance program. It's also a great time of year to stop by the restaurant and bakery, which are open every Wednesday and Thursday from 8:30 to 9:45 AM for breakfast, and 12:30 to 1:45 PM for lunch when school is in session. The menu for each day can be found linked to this report, or go to nmtcc.org. And please make reservations by calling 215-368-1177 at extension 193. The next meeting of the JOC will be Monday, December 19th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Next is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great, thank you. The MCIU Board met on November 16th. The meeting started with a program highlight where Alfred Howard, Director of the Office of Facility and Operation, presented an overview of the many services and projects ongoing within the MCIU. Dr. Speaker shared that the MCIU partnered with the Pennsylvania Department of Homeland Security in hosting a regional school safety conference on November 16th. The MCIU Ed Foundation held a successful fall fundraiser with a special shout out to the MCIU Board and the MCIU Educational Foundation Board for their generous support of the event. The MCIU Board heard various reports and approved new contracts and budgets. The next meeting of the MCIU Board will be on Wednesday, January 25th. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Next is the North Penn Educational Foundation Report. Mrs. Ramich, again, please.
Great. The foundation did not hold a regular meeting in November, but meets next on December 20th at North Penn High School, where trustees will enjoy a demo of the Spatial Computing Lab, which we have supported since its inception. In late November, the Grant Review Committee reviewed 52 grants and approved $36,664 in general programs and an additional $35,940 in educational improvement tax credit programs. It's over $72,000 in supports that's going to support teacher and personnel-led projects. This is the most we have ever awarded at this time of year. December is a time to give back to the foundation. We are currently in the midst of our annual campaign, and we are also soliciting staff tributes. To learn more about all things foundation-related, please visit northpenneducationnpenfoundation.org or contact Christine Lebruski at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And finally, we have the Legislative Report. Mr. McBane, please.
Thank you very much. While the composition of the Pennsylvania Senate appears to be set, three seats in the House will require special elections in the coming months to determine who will permanently represent the 32nd, 34th, and 35th House districts. These will also determine which party controls the legislature and who will chair the House Education and other committees. The rest of the Senate and House will reconvene on January 3rd to start the new legislative session. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. The Solicitors' Report?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, next up then would be the Superintendent Report. Dr. Bauer, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. First up, we have the Consent Agenda. I recommend approving items A through K, namely, adoption of policies for a first read, a notice of intent to repeal policies, contracts, alternative placements, student agreements, student travel, approval to advertise handheld two-way radio bid, permission to advertise real estate brokerage services, permission to advertise or seek pricing for senior cafeteria rooftop HVAC unit, permission to advertise construction management services, and Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, second alternate.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
I would just like to note that it's been a while since we've had such a long list of student travel for these events, and it's wonderful to see everybody heading back. Thank you to the educators who are supporting them and the parents that are going along, and best of luck to all of our students.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now on to the non-consent items. First, I recommend approval of personnel items as per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, run with me on this one. It's a mouthful. I recommend the approval of Change Order 27 to Low Bar Incorporated in the amount of $0 for the replacement of the reverse osmosis system for the Kitchen Alto Sham Combi Ovens by having a contractual change made to apply the unit cost allowance number 1B to this change order. I also recommend the approval of Change Order 5 to Micro Mechanical Incorporated for rectifying airflow problems in the blower coil units in the amount of $0 for having a contractual change made to apply the unit cost allowance number 7 to this change order.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
I feel like I should say, "End of report."
Did very well. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rush. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Rush, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend the approval of Change Order 1 to Detweiler Roofing LLC in the amount of $0 for the change in completion date to August 11th, 2023.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
President Stoll, I do have one question. So, this is coming back to facilities at the January meeting, so do we vote on it tonight? Because all it is is a change in the end date due to delays in materials, right?
Correct, yes.
Should we should vote on it tonight?
I believe it was recommended from the FNO Committee...
I forgot.
For action.
Forgive me. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley.
Sorry. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Scrocki.
So there's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend the approval of a design contract with Schrader Group in the amount of $28,407 for the design of door hardware replacement at Gwinnor Elementary School.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I recommend the approval of the Community Education Program Fee Schedule for the Spring of 2023. And just to address the question that I know is coming from Dr. G, these fees have not changed.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. G. Any comments or questions?
I would only comment that I am grateful that the fees continue to remain consistent. I think that there are a lot of seniors and taxpayers in our district that benefit from these programs. I see that there's a long list, and so it's very exciting, and I hope that many of our community members will take advantage of it, because it's really a very nice... And I got a new puppy, so maybe I'll try dog obedience school.
Thank you, Dr. G.
Thank you. So I believe there's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend approval of Sycamore International to be awarded as the winning vendor of the RFP for Technology Recycling effective June 30th, effective until, excuse me, June 30th, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rush, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, I have one of those old TVs, you know, those big screens I gotta get rid of. Can I bring it here? Will they take care of it for me?
Yes, our enact club does host recycling events for old cathode races.
I believe they host it twice a year, right?
They do.
They do.
They just did one.
They did, a couple weeks ago, yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I recommend approval of the 2022-23 Spring Athletics Supplies Bid in the amount of $14,680.71, as per the attached bid tabulation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I recommend approval to award the 2022-23 Transportation Vehicles Bid to MA Brightbill Body Works Incorporated, based on the lowest responsible bid of $925,144 for eight 78-passenger propane bus vehicles, as per the attached bid summary.
All in favor say aye.
Nope, motion.
Or, I'm sorry, all... Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
Just, and this brings our fleet to what percentage approximately being propane-fueled?
So right now, we have 38 out of 131, so we're gonna add here another eight. So that's, you know, we're really starting to get to a point where, you know, somewhere around 40% with this addition. Keep in mind, we also, with our contractor, we have 59 buses with our contractor. They are 100% propane for a student.
I'm sorry, did you say 100%?
Yes. All 59 of their buses are propane buses.
I always look for the green, you know, when I see a bus on the street.
The Greenberg, yeah.
Yep. All right. So there's a motion on the floor. If there's no further comment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the election of Mr. Ron Linky Jr. as the non-member treasurer of the Board of School Directors for the period of December 19th, 2022, through June 30th, 2023, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ms. Kristen Johnson and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000, with the premium to be paid by the school district. Compensation for duties assigned by the chief financial officer shall not exceed $100 per month.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend approval of the depositories as per the attached. The authorized signatories for the accounts will be the board president, board secretary, and treasurer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the attached 2021-22 Audit Report, a copy of which is on file in the business office and posted online on our website.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question, Madam President. Mrs. Scrocki, any word on that next Moody's call?
Probably sometime in 2023. More to come on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ramich, she wants to... All right, so a motion's on the floor. If there's no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and All-in PA OH LLC concerning the property located at 1250 Welsh Road, Montgomery Township, parcel 460004165001, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be increased, excuse me, from $2,62,180 to $2,296,800.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and NADGNNN PALP concerning the property located at 780 South Valley Forge Road, Townmenson Township, which is parcel 530008948008, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the power sole shall be increased from $504,860 to $1,029,600.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
You're welcome. This concludes my report.
All right. Next up would be the Finance Report from Mr. Scrocki, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple quick reminders for our taxpayers in the community. December 31st is rapidly approaching, and that would be the end of your opportunity to pay your real estate taxes with the 5% penalty. If you're unable to pay by December 31st, the property will be turned over to the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau for delinquent collection. Also, for those individuals who may be eligible for the Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rent Rebate Program, the deadline to apply for that program for taxes paid in 2021 is also the end of December. I'd also like to let the board know that, once again this year, we did receive certification of our district-wide Safety Committee. This is something that we've been fortunate enough to receive every year, and we receive a premium discount on our workers' compensation insurance policy as a result of having that certified Safety Committee. So that discount that we get because of that Safety Committee is $44,671 for this year. And that committee is now run by Mr. Alinsky out of the Facilities Department. He took over for Mr. Dur. In terms of the finances for the month, this report is through November, 2022. Our receipts for November totaled $10.3 million. Our disbursements were $18.9 million. So this is the first month of the fiscal year that we are now cash flow negative. That will continue for the remainder of the fiscal year, simply because of the timing of our real estate tax payments. Our total available funds at the end of November were $205.1 million. And for comparative purposes, that's an increase of $19 million compared to November of 2021. Madam President, I ask for approval of the Treasurer's Report for the month of November, 2022.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Scrocki, do you happen to know, is that the maximum amount for the Safety Committee credit?
I'm sorry?
Is that the maximum amount that we're eligible for, for the Safety Committee?
Well, we receive a 5% discount. This is for self-funded. The discount actually comes through our insurance consortium. So it's 5% on the premium. So it varies a little bit each year depending on what our premium is, but the 5% discount, that percentage is a static amount.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, if there's no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next up, we have the sanction and approval of invoices for the month of November. I'm recommending ratification of those invoices for the month of November, which totaled
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, for informational purposes, we have the financial reports through the And finally, for informational purposes, we have the financial reports through the end of November. And again, as I mentioned in previous meetings, our fiscal year so far is shaping up pretty good. We're bringing in more revenue than budgeted, and we're spending less money than budgeted. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scrawkey. All right. Next up on the agenda is other businesses. Anyone have any other business that they'd like to discuss this evening?
I just, one quick-
Go ahead.
One quick comment. As we enter the holiday season, I just want to wish all of our employees, staff, administration, teachers, happy holiday and a well-deserved break. We are about halfway into the year, and I think we just appreciate everyone and everything that you've done in the first half of the year for our students. So, thank you all on behalf of the board, and we hope that you do enjoy a well-deserved break.
Thank you, Dr. G. Go ahead, Mr. Casa.
Thank you, Madam President. Adding to, or amending to Mr. McBane's comments